Hi, everybody. This is a meeting of the Wyndham Northeast Union Elementary School District. It was known as either WNUSD or the Athras School Board. And I'm calling that meeting to order on January 26, 2023. We're meeting at the Grafton Elementary. Now that I've, we've also have with us this evening, the members of the Westminster School Board in a joint meeting and we'll try to deal with their item early as, as fascinating as they might find our meeting. So first off, is always introductions. And what I wanted to do is do the introduction of the, of the WN. The introduce the members of the Westminster School Board. By the way, we are looking for attendance by Krista Gay. Do we know she, we heard anything tonight?
I have not heard anything. Nicole, do you know if Krista Gay is going to be able to join us?
I have not, but I'll try to reach out to her.
When we do budget approvals, I'd really like it if we can have everybody present. All right, so introductions again of, of the folks here from the, from the Athras Board and Administration, and then we'll carry on with the Westminster introductions. So starting from my furthest left.
Okay, I'm Harold Norris from Athens.
Lynn Morgan from.
Kathy Ciano Goodwin from Grafton.
I'm Jack Bright. Chair of the, of this board and, and from Grafton.
Jim Kozina, SU Finance.
Angela Cartier, the principal at Grafton Elementary School.
Hardy Merrill, Grafton.
Andy Haas Superintendent, and Ms. Gay has joined us.
Ah, and it's time for you to introduce yourself, Krista.
Krista Gay Athens. Sorry, I couldn't make it home with the snowstorm last night.
But it is. And we'll note that we have, we have civilian in attendance tonight in the form of Nancy Merrill, who is serving as community member and part-time taxi driver. So now why don't we have the folks, let me introduce your board members, Cheryl. Introduce yourself.
Cheryl, Cheryl, Chair of the Westminster School Board and one of our five members also of those remotely tonight. So Karen, please introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board, and I'm gonna need to leave by 1:30. I'm in Waipia Village in, in the big island of Hawaii.
Thank you for joining us.
Meet in, we're gonna meet there in Hawaii. I understand you've all offered to get his ticket next year. That's very kind.
Right, and then also Charlie Hutchinson, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Hutchinson, Vice Chair of the Westminster Board, and I'm in little old Westminster, Vermont.
We have a forum, should we need to.
We do. Board members are at the school concert tonight, which starts at 6:30, but we do have a forum.
I appreciate both their priorities and the fact that you managed to have a forum anyway. All right, adjustments to the agenda. I, we've got the Westminster School Board. Stuff we need to get the budget approved, I have to have articles for that. Actually, we have to do the tuition rate because that has to be, actually, we'll do that afterwards. And I think that's everything for tonight. There's a lot of paper everybody's surrounded with, and we're gonna get right to the, the Westminster School Board allocation of funds of the 2019 surplus. And Hardy wants you to start, and then I want Cheryl, if you wouldn't mind pitching in because we need to explain both what this is and why we're settling up.
Basically, I had researched back to the 2019 surplus when, actually, we weren't a combined unit, we were actually two separate units, Grafton and Athens Joint Contract and Westminster. Grafton Athens Joint Contract in the 2019 year-end audit done by RHR had a surplus of $56,492, and Westminster had a surplus of $342,970. I really don't know whether the boards back then knew what the surplus was gonna be in 19 when they were doing the current budget, but they came up with a couple, a couple of articles, one of which is $100,000 for a tuition reserve and $24,166 for our capital reserve. And the question here is how to split that. Basically, the money has already gone to the towns in the, a year ago when we determined the total surplus for 2012 and 21 and split it between the two towns. I think it was 600 and something, well, 305 for Grafton, 350. And that included this $56,492 for us, and theirs included their $42,970. Now, if you take the percentage of that and as a percent of the total of those two, which was surplus of 399, 462, Grafton Athens was 14.14%, and Westminster was 85.86%. So my recommendation would be, we already have the money, would be to create reserves on our book, and I would. Go to Jim on this, but I would just think we would create a reserve out of that surplus for 14.14% of Grafton's on the tuition, which would be $14,140, and for Westminster, $85,860, which would come out of their surplus reserve. And for the WNUSD, this year for the capital reserve, $3,417, and Westminster, $20,749. That's based on our percentage split. And all that has to be done, I think, Jim, is create reserves for them and take the money out of the surplus that you should have on the balance sheet for each town.
Now, I have, we have an option tonight when we do, we unify different tests, and that is that we can have as an article for the, for the, for the ballot, the, shall the voters approve the apportionment of the FY 2019 surplus held jointly by Westminster and Union District of, what was the dollar, the dollar number again, they're just.
Well, your total is 399, 462. And again, that's already been split in a warrant in an article last year to the two towns, so.
This there.
Well, I think we need to leave it in.
Right, okay.
You see, to create the reserves.
All right, so, so if we create the reserves, we don't need to have that.
You don't need an article or anything, we just have to agree that that's what we want to do.
Okay, so that was, that was the question I had, was it seemed like it was redundant, so it is redundant, so I'm just gonna cut that from this. No longer have an article for. Okay, so then I guess I need a motion to that. First off, is the, have you guys discussed this, and are you on board with this? Do you need to have a discussion?
Right, this, we've, we've in general terms discussed it at the board level, and knowing that there had already been approved by the Union Elementary School District with the voters of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster agreeing to create these two reserve funds, we understood that those monies would come to the new Westminster School District as revenue July 1, but we all missed the step of allocating those monies proportionately. And so, and then, and I have sought counsel, I have talked with or emailed with Sean Chewie about this, and I think we're fine just proceeding with a vote to allocate and then to use the monies as the voters had already voted to.
All right, do you need to call your board formally in a, have a call order?
The Westminster board members in attendance, let me call you officially to order. You were all here at 6 o'clock, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. First and.
Hardy. You don't mind?
Move that the tuition were, the WNUSD and. Dollars as follows, $14,140 for the WNUSD and $85,860 for Westminster.
All right, I'll need a second, I'll second that, all right, very good. Now, we can, we can have this moved on your board.
I entertain a motion to repeat what Hardy just offered as a motion on the floor. Either Charlie or Karen.
I think I heard.
I, are you, I, I'm trying to, someone unmuted me, and then I had to unmute my, unmute myself, so there we go. Can you hear me?
And I, we think we, we think we. And we were, we corrected.
Sister is, is. The WSD made. She can't hear.
Yes.
So two motions on the.
On the floor.
I. Yes.
Cheryl, you're cutting in and out for me, I'm afraid. Am I required to vote?
Yes, in a minute.
Okay.
Put a second on our board, I'm gonna call. Hardy?
Yeah.
And I. Let's vote.
I.
Yes, yes is in a thumbs up. Yes is in a thumbs up.
Board, it's on that. Early?
Last of thumbs tonight. Well, you know.
We also have the. Motion is, I move that the capital reserve, the capital reserve, 1,100, 1,100. But follows, yes, 1,400, $1,000, Westminster, 1,000.
All right. Right. I can. And you'll need this.
From Westminster. And Charlie. Would you be a second, please? Okay, thank you.
So, we do the roll call, we do the roll call. Yes, yeah, all right, so.
Yes.
Another yes, another yes, another yes. All right.
Yes. Yes.
Cheryl, pass those. Sounds like. Thanks. Um. You, you all wanna hang around.
I think what I is indicate, Charlie, if they choose, thank you so much for helping us, thank you so much for helping us tonight. Enjoy the rest of your holiday.
Yeah, I am, I'm so sorry this is in and out, but at least you saw my thumbs up.
Same for me, I, I think we're being dismissed, but I'm not sure, because I'm only hearing half of everything. Is that right? Okay.
Well, so we are now moving, so we are now moving. You know what we didn't do is we didn't do communications and public comment. Do it, does our member, official member of the public have any comment? All right. Moving along to item five, which is out, no wait, we did, we've done five. So now it's the approval of the budget. We've got a lot of options. Hardy has done a job that embarrasses me by how well it's been done in terms of breaking out every contingency we can think of, all the numbers in a way that I've never seen them. And we've got some options in terms of how we want to deal with both our budget, our surplus, what we ask of taxpayers, and we don't normally have these options, and want Hardy to kind of walk us through.
Yeah, I think Jim should walk it, let us know what the board did.
Yeah, yeah, bottom line, bottom line. All right, let me get some of these copies out, so I don't have to.
And exactly, while Jim is distributing, would you let Karen know that she can leave, that she chooses?
Yeah, Karen? I, go, go do stuff in Hawaii. Yeah.
Go to other way.
Yeah.
Send us some of those Hawaiian cookies, I like those.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all, and I'll be back in time for some snow, I'm sure. Bye.
So you're on, Jim.
So from your last budget, we have looked at a couple of items. One was, I think, excess cost.
A couple of, we reduced a couple.
And we reduced some of the tuition costs.
Yep.
So, so the new number that we're at now is a million 756,000.
793, all right.
Correct, yeah.
792.
Yes. Which is down 20,191 from last year.
Right. Last year we, yeah, last, this different year, we spent one, or we appropriated 1776983 on 98, I don't know what the 98 cents was for, but there it was. We were trying to be really accurate. And, and given how things work, that's a, that's a very funny thing, but. Jim, a couple of quick things. On a, given the state's tjerking down of our number of equalized pupils. And given the fact that state uses that as it's from what they tax us, at least in part. What does this represent on a equalized pupil basis?
On an equalized pupil basis, you are down 12.3 students.
Right.
Now, again, why that's significant, if it goes down, your cost per student goes up.
Right.
And the other thing that affects the tax rate greatly is the common level of appraisal. Now, your common level of appraisal went down 4.68. And again, when common level of appraisal goes down, taxes go up. So it, it puts a lot of pressure when that happens. I mean, both those items puts a lot of back pressure on the tax rate.
The reason I'm asking this is we're trying to do some planning to both cushion things for this year to make sure we don't get into excess spending and to the point where we're giving a positive, a large contribution to the state. And trying to keep tax rates stable, at the same time, trying to plan for the future and plan for the fact that we have a foreseeable change in our equalized student for probably the next five years. So I think some of what we need to figure out is how we, how we handle that.
I've taken, made an attempt at that.
You've made more than an attempt, and this is where, this is where you find out what a good fiscal guy, Hardy Merrill, is.
Does everybody have this package? If we don't.
Do we have more, I think I've got a bunch of these, I thought they were single sheets, and they are not, so let's make sure everybody has.
So this is a complete set here, if you want.
You gotta call.
He does have. Okay, and I'm gonna do that, this is. That's me. Here it comes.
I think you just need it for the people, I've got, let's have.
I think we have.
Yeah, I, I think we're, just, I just gotta make sure everybody's got, I really thought she was handing out to everybody, and I just realized now. To me to hand out to you. And my apologies for doing that late. Okay. So that's. Let's see, so you should have a, a allocation surplus in Athens, Grafton, tax rate estimation, and what else are we?
Well, there's a, so a warning that started, and a surplus of the allocation.
And then, and this is. I guess, I guess the warning for last year, I don't.
Here's like a packet.
Okay. What is the homestead rate? Does everybody have?
What's the purple one?
I also, when we get down to the warnings, the, the, the warning articles I sent you all in your email. There, I always know we said, got computers tonight. Some of that did as well. Krista, did you get a?
Probably didn't get it.
I sent, Krista, I sent you, I sent you a big pile of stuff regarding, I don't know if I sent you Hardy's stuff, I think I did, but I definitely sent the, the two warnings, the one that we.
I have all the warnings, yep.
I'll send it.
I can.
Yeah, let's go get Hardy's stuff too, Krista.
You want me to get the articles of agreement that you sent?
Andy just took it, I did.
Yeah, but, no, the Articles Agreement is a, is a separate item, this is, this is, we will have a, you have two warnings that are in your future. One, we, tonight, because we're, we run out of time, and that is the, that is the stuff for the, for the, for your budget, bottom line budget number, and you hand your vote, and you're voting for your board members, those are the things you absolutely have to have. There are things that we probably should have, like, you know, any surplus allocation, but you can defer those to your district meeting. It's for, for Westminster, when they're doing it currently, I don't know which, which you allocated where, but, you know, you can do it either way, but the, the two things you have to have on your, by law, you have to have on your Australian ballot, we have to have on our Australian ballot, because we're multi-count district, is the, yeah, are the members in the budget.
Here, does everybody have a copy now? Okay, so I've started off up here, the 2024 estimated homestead tax rate, and that's based on this budget of expenditures of $1,756,793. Now, we're gonna have, we can have a couple of things that are gonna mitigate that. Number one is they've identified a surplus at the WNSU for the 22-year, what was it, a million eight?
Yeah.
So our share of that is 106,005. I'm recommending that used as revenue to reduce our expenditures in the coming year. With that, I'm also recommending that we use some of our surplus, which is a total estimated right now of about $555,000, which is on our schedule, we'll look at in a minute, that we need to use about $75,000 of that this year. And that would give us education spending of $1,575,788. And we have, according to the state, equalized per pupil, 73.17. So if I divide that into that 1,575, I get a per pupil spending of $21,535.98, which is up three and a half percent from last year per pupil. I also am estimating that this year, they're gonna hit us with, you know, an excess spending per pupil, penalty maybe. I'm estimating that number's gonna be 21,000, if it is, we'd have a penalty of about 389 bucks. The reason I'm estimating 21,000 is it was 19 and change last year, and it goes up about a thousand bucks every year. So that's my, it's an estimate on my part, the legislature has not determined that yet.
Yeah.
So that would make our total spending per pupil 21,925,96. Now, the key element there is the next element, which is your homestead property yield. Now, last year, that was $13,314. Now, December 1st this year, Fred Bowley, they were putting out with a recommendation that that number be roughly $15,400 and something dollars. I don't think it'll be that much, I'm taking a number somewhere in the middle, but as Jim and I think, my number is probably pretty conservative.
Yeah.
Right, Jim?
Yes, and it'd be nice if it was conservative, because it turned out they gave it to us, we'd, we'd, a lot of the picks, but.
So, so if that comes to pass, which I, I think it probably will, I might even be better than that, that would yield us the homestead education tax rate of $1.51.21. Now, that is 5.03 cents less than last year.
Does that include Athens?
Yeah, this is the WNUSD, so let's just stick with this schedule. So I'm also looking at, well, what about 2025? Well, first, what are we gonna spend next year? Well, I would guess that, you know, we aren't gonna have that 106,000 come back necessarily, so our assessment's gonna be back to where it was this year. So I'm starting with a, with a number of about $1,756,793, and I'm, I'm just speculating here, but we know our head counts have gone down, we know that there aren't a lot more kids coming into the school, and we're probably gonna have to tighten our belts a little bit. So I'm just putting a task in there of 100,000 bucks, which yields a spending number of $1,656,793. Now, if that number materializes, and I use another $150,000 of the surplus that we have, we, and I, I'm assuming our head counts are gonna go down by three and a half percent again, down to 78.61 kids for equalized students, that yields an education spending per pupil of $21,339.65, which is actually a little bit less than this year. If that materializes, and I'm just holding the same yield, which I'm sure is gonna be up higher, and that would give me a homestead tax rate next year of 1,47.17 cents, which would be down 4.04 from even this year, which was down from the prior. So that's, that's the impact that the surplus has on your tax rate, even though your equalized people are gonna go. Are there any questions on that? Again, some of this is speculation on my part, but Jim and I think it's pretty good.
Just, just a couple of, of points for, now, this is, this is, this will all be up to you over the next several years, the thing that I really value about the, about the 2025 numbers here is it shows you that if you're applying the surplus at $150,000 level, this is what you get, if you decide to apply less surplus and want it sort of, just to keep it as even as possible to push that, you know, I, I talked about no plowing the surplus as far forward as, as, as you'll be allowed to do, you've got some, you've got some room, you know, you, you could apply $100,000, and you'd still, you'd be, you know, you'd be, you'd be, you'd be coming pretty much, you know, you've got some wiggle room, and the whole key here is to have you have wiggle room, because what you, you know that these, that's your equalized pupil count. You know that these, that's your equalized pupil count is predictable, it's going to go down by three percent issue.
Uh, are you thinking now that, uh, like in the next three to five years?
Yeah, something twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Yeah, so you're gonna be nicking at that stuff, and what you don't want is you don't wanna have. You don't wanna have a sticker shock at the end of the process, and the way you solve that, at least. In the medium level term, is you. You play with that, you keep very careful with that surplus, so that you. Can push it forward as, as far as you can, there will be a day where you're gonna have to think about all this stuff. But maybe you'll have more students by then, who knows what will happen.
Krista had a question.
Yes.
Sorry.
I, I have two questions and I apologize if you all know the answer to this, I'm just new. What it, the first one is, what's the excess pupil spending penalty? What, what is that?
Okay, it's something, it's a law that the, the state legislature passed, that said, if your. Um, education spending for equalized pupil, which is dividing by your expenditures and the equalized pupils. Is more than a certain number. Dollar for dollar, you pay that as a penalty and it gets added on to your per pupil cost. That's what that is. Uh, in this case. Assuming it's gonna be three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and next year, I'm estimating it won't be there, cause I think it will be higher, better than that. So, that's what that is.
So, does, do you mind if I ask what, does he, does the state? Kind of regulate that each year, because each district is gonna have less kids, or are we the only district that's failed, you know?
They pick that number for the whole state.
Yeah, okay.
That's a number that Trump, that the legislature chooses when they determine what the yield is gonna be.
So it's kind of like a luxury tax in sports, if you, you have a salary cap and if you go above it, you can go above it, but you're gonna pay a penalty. So. But before consolidation, I forget, it was the year before the year, the, uh, it was the year before, two years before, I think it was two years before. We had a penalty of in the near, within fifteen hundred bucks per student. And, you know, that was. Part of the, part of the initial joint contract process was to get that under control, but we have, we, well, you'll remember those one year we lost, we lost. Boat, when, when Ed was still here, and we have tried to stay. Around that three hundred dollar figure for less since then. Uh, you, you may, you probably have the numbers going back a while, as well as all the numbers going forward, but I think that's roughly accurate. Um, so we're trying to, small schools. It's really easy to get penalized, because on one hand. These numbers are kind of artificial, on the other hand, we are mandated to have. The equivalent level of services at schools twice our size have, you know, we had double or double the student population. Really, we wouldn't be spending any more, you know, or, or marginally more on teachers or a lot of the support stuff, because. You know, when you go to class of six, you go to class of twelve, it's still good, somebody has to teach it.
Is that when they called us a gold town?
Yeah, that's when they used to, but that's when they didn't pay any attention to who lives here, but yeah.
No, that isn't why they call, the reason they call us a gold town is because. When we do our tax rate for non-res and for the homestead, against our grand list. It comes out to more than it required, is required, the fund, our, for us, the fund, the high school and the school. So the excess all goes back to the state and into the education fund, we are the only town of. Uh, say Athens and Westminster, that is applicable to, right?
So if I'm understanding, I'm sorry.
As tax rate, we have a lot of non-res. That is what creates the, uh, the goal, us being a gold town.
Thank you, Krista, go ahead.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the state's penalizing us because they're saying that our cost of pupils is too high?
Yes.
Because, you know, our kindergarten has one class, so we have to pay the teacher this, okay, um, and then my. My next question was, I thought we were predicting that our student population was gonna go up. I thought next year our kindergarten class was gonna have like seven, is it then dropping down again? Are we losing big classes?
We'll have, I think, forty kids in school next year, right?
We're, we're losing, um, twelve, that's why.
Okay.
One, basically, the kids coming in for kindergarten and the kids leaving for sixth grade are pretty much the same, so we're gonna remain the same. Right, okay, but we're not predicting like five years of three kids in a class, right?
I, we actually have, um, and I can, I'm happy to share that, um, those numbers, but we have all the projections for the next. Five years for all the kids that are born, you know, like.
Okay. Yeah.
Here, to, to, to help a little bit, equalized pupil count, equalized pupil count is a factor of a couple things, one. It's the number of kids you have in the building and the number of kids that have. A variety of other items that affect, you know, some of its special needs, but that's changing, but that, those numbers add into it. Probably have. Is our number is, our equal pupil number is what, seventy?
Right now, it's seventy-three point one seven, according to the state.
Right, so now we don't have seventy-three kids in the building, right? So.
Yeah, high school kids are part of that.
So, you, you. No, that, that, that's just, that, that, that's the district number, that's, that's K through A. The problem you have is, as long as there's that big a difference between the actual kids you have in the building. And that number, that equalized pupil count, that equalized pupil count number has. A shock absorber in it, when your numbers drop really rapidly. The state says, well, our compensation will drop, but you have to plan, so we're only gonna drop it by. Three percent.
Point five percent.
There's three point, what he said, three point five percent per year. But what that means is that we have a predictable drop. In our state funding for the next five years, maybe more of that three point five percent. What we're trying to do here is to try to offset that as much as possible. By pushing surpluses forward and doing some, some accountant stuff, as I say. And, uh, and see where we land with it, you know, I, it. Before they have that shock absorber, taxes in the community, um, this, you know, thirty years ago. Taxes in the community would bounce literally ten to fifteen percent per year, it's crazy. And this was a way of taking, taking some of that, uh, pressure off. But it still doesn't, uh, doesn't solve the long-term demographic issue.
So what is the state, as far as, uh, percentage of pupil rate and all that stuff? You know, um. Is, is there, is there a, uh, a bottom number that they go by and then if we go under that or above that?
The, the couple of things, one, the, some of these numbers get, you know, there were numbers that get set by the legislature. So you have that factor going in, and they, those numbers have bounced really quite a bit, uh. They, they also have, they also use things like their own available money, cause you have a, you have tax funds. For sales taxes, if you remember the one year when we all thought taxes were gonna go up by ten percent because of the revenue during, uh. During COVID, so, so you've got a lot of pieces, one of the things that. That Hardy has reminded me of, which we don't talk about nearly enough, is how little. Control we have over actual municipal real estate taxes. It's remarkable how little we actually have. It's slightly infuriating, but that's just how it is.
Not, that's, um, yeah.
Uh, you know, but the, the compensation is, we have these shock absorbers and all this stuff.
Well, to summarize, what I'm saying here is I think we're pretty much in control, our Homestead Tax Rate for the next couple of years, reasonable, in a reasonable manner.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we're, we're doing that, I think we can do that, so. With the numbers that are here, with the numbers that we have for expenditures this year, and, uh, if we can, uh, come up with what we can do next year, so.
Just to put a pitch in, it's none of my business, but, uh, you know.
Or there, there any other questions on that schedule?
The Homestead Tax Rate, you have. Is it a dollar fifty-six per hundred thousand on your house, or?
About the Homestead Tax, no, the Homestead Tax Rate, uh, we gotta get into tax rates further on, okay, this, this is basically. The WNUSD Homestead Tax Rate, which makes up fifty per, well, it's part of the two parts. To your tax rate, this part, and there's the high school part.
Right.
This is only part of it.
The, the joke, that wasn't a joke, that I'm gonna go to, go to town meetings, say I spent seventy-five.
And what I'm saying is, our Homestead Tax Rate, if I, we use these numbers for next year, is gonna be five cents less than what it was this year.
I really appreciate you breaking that all down, Hardy, thank you, I'm sure this took a lot of time, it was really helpful for me who's new to this, so thank you very much.
Okay, shall we move on? I, I think, I wanna skip the next page, which is some of the articles that I just happened to, you know, sort of, to know. And, uh, we can go to the allocation of surplus page. So what this shows is that, um, when we split the twenty-one surplus with Westminster last year. We ended up with three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. Now, Jim, preliminarily, feels that we're gonna have, uh. You know, about another two hundred and five thousand, five hundred and five dollars this year. If all goes well for our, if we are, but we don't know what that number is yet. But assuming that, uh, that we get it, we would have a total surplus. Uh, after this year, a five fifty-five, eight thirty-five. Now, what my recommendation is, that we're gonna use seventy-five thousand of that this year. Which means, and that would come out of the two thousand twenty-one, which means we'd have two seventy-five, three three oh left. If we use a hundred and fifty next year, we'd have a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty left. Out of that one, plus still the two oh five, five oh five, for a total of three thirty, eight thirty-five. Um, and then I, because of what we just did a little while ago with Westminster on the tuition reserve, et cetera, I've, uh, identified here. They're gonna use a little bit of that surplus to set up those two reserves, which one thousand one hundred and forty dollars and three thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So then, I've just thrown in here, then we're talking about going into the, you know, the next. Twenty-six and twenty-seven years, and we would have available to play without getting any more money. You know, about, um, a hundred and so, a hundred and fifty thousand for twenty-six budget. And a hundred and sixty-three thousand left for twenty-seven budget, if we need it, but, uh, you know. So, that's, that's how you can split out those numbers.
That's just no foul.
Any questions on that? So next, uh, we get to the, the schedule that probably interests the people the most. Uh, which is the estimated tax rate that I'm coming up with, uh, with the town, both towns, exactly. Um, you can see the WNUSD portion. Uh, again, what that is, is coming down to, uh, our being Homestead equalized tax rate for twenty-four. Is one dollar fifty-one cents of twenty-one, uh, and, uh. The high school, Jim gave me these numbers yesterday, I don't know whether they changed them or not.
No.
No, so, uh, their, their education spending is seven million six seventy-two. Uh, they have three hundred and eighty-five oh seven students, so their, uh, education spending is nineteen thousand nine twenty-three. And if I use our Homestead Property Yield of fourteen-five, I would come up with one dollar and thirty-seven. Point four zero cents for the high school as a rate. Now, the component, the next components are, you look at your kids that you have. Uh, that this, and they say, of our total students, fifty-one point two percent. Are in the WNUSD. And forty-eight point five eight percent are in the high school. So you multiply those percentages by the Homestead Rates, and you come up with what your. Pro-rated equalized tax rate is, which in the Homestead for Grafton is point seven 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 five. For the high school, point six six seven five. The next component is what, uh, Jack alluded to earlier, which is CLA. But this year, we have to, uh, our CLA is ninety-seven point nine five, so you have to divide that number into the. Um, each pro, pro-rated tax rate that you have for the two, uh, entities. And you come up with Grafton of point seven nine three eight, point six eight one five, or a total of point one forty-seven fifty-three. And that is exactly point zero zero eight two more than last year. If that materializes, then, I think the yield may be better than fourteen-five, at least that's what I'm hoping for, so.
And that's about as close as you can come to plat.
Now, for Athens, Grafton, not the Athens, the next page.
Yeah.
And, uh, you go down the same way, and where you, where, what hurts Athens a little bit is. You have fifty-nine point oh one percent of your kids in the WNUSD. Whereas you only have forty point nine nine in the high school, and the high school has a lower rate. So, uh, your pro-rated tax rate comes out, the point eight nine two three, plus the point oh, point five six three two. And then you divide by your CLA, which unfortunately dropped by ten points this year. From about eighty, from about, um, ninety-something down to eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Um, and so you, you do that, and you come up with one point oh one eight two, plus point six four two seven. And I think you're gonna have about a one fifty-six, uh, tax rate, which is about three cents higher.
It's just a low inflation, but it isn't now appetizing, but it's.
Put, put that together with the budget we just kicked to the town.
Well, thing is, you know, the, the, it's. It's hard to say, gee, that your, your overall, um, your overall cost of living everywhere else is. Is up between seven and nine percent, so aren't we expected that we got it down to three, but that's, you know, it's still a thing. Uh, I think these are. You know, you also, you know, you have the consistent issue of one that your appraisal le- level was. You know, well, you know, compared to what it should have been, and you, and you're starting to have people buy houses and pay a lot of money for it. And that affects the price there, that affects it for everybody. And you got nailed to that.
Like, like, uh, I'm also a listener in Grafton, so that's how I know about common level appraisal and stuff.
Yeah.
But basically, like Athens hasn't had a reappraisal for over ten years. Grafton had one done two years ago.
What, two years?
Two years ago, and we were one oh one last year, so we only went down to ninety-seven this year, but, uh, and my wife is also a listener, so. So this year, our sales are also gonna come, unless they go down more next year. The market is still pretty strong.
The, the CLA stuff tends to get balanced, after all is said and done, probably don't tell you, but that. And, and across the whole state, you know, we, we had that same bump that they had in Southern New England where. Housing, housing prices were, you know, up and by ten, what, fifteen percent. Uh, year to year, so there may be some offset. At some point, but that's gonna be a legislative decision to, um, to readjust that.
Oh, that's my spiel. Uh, I don't. And, you know, I, I will make a motion to approve the expenditure budget.
I'd, I'd like that, I, I think this is a sensible number.
I just wanna go with Jim, cause I believe we have to approve that million seven fifty-six, seven ninety-three, is that correct?
Correct. One, one seven seven six, no, one seven seven, what's the end?
One seven five six.
Five six, that was.
Ninety-three.
Yeah. Seven ninety-three, and I. Okay, yeah, that was the number you and I talked about earlier today, right?
Yes.
Okay, um. So we will need to plug that when we do the warning, we'll need, we're, we're in, last year. You'll see there's an Article Two that uses one seven six, they will be using that as your new number, which is.
So we're using that number just so, so that we can. Have a surplus, keep the surplus.
Well, we won't have a, what, what'll have, uh, yeah, well, we're keeping some sort of, by using that number, then we. Well, we won't have a, what, what'll have, yeah, yeah, well, we're keeping some sort of, by using that number, then we have to approve, you know, that in the warning, we have to have a warning. To make this one oh six, oh, oh, five that we anticipate getting as a reduction to that number. And also seventy five thousand dollars of our existing surplus surplus as a reduction to that number. Which yields is a net number of one, five, seven, five, seven, eighty.
The main thing is you have to add, yeah, as, as people that watched. Us make the sausage at the high school, although the amount that. We build, well, just like the amount that the S U builds the communities, this is the amount of all of it that we're billing the town. Basically, the, or the district, I should say. So again, that's the, the number we're gonna put in here is. Last year we said, shall we appropriate the sum of one, seven, seven, six, nine, eighty three, ninety eight? This year we're gonna say, one article, one, seven.
Five, six.
Six, seven, ninety three, zero, now, yeah, all right. So, and that will be part of the warning, so. If you'll just indulge me, because I've got a master copy of the morning, I'm just gonna go make that change while I'm right here. I didn't do it, I didn't wanna.
One, five, seven, five.
Yeah, so it's seventy, seven, five, six. Five, six. Seven ninety eight.
Seven ninety three.
Seven ninety three, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm dyslexic here, hold on.
Are you editing and writing the articles right now?
Yeah. Whole point, whole point is I wanna ma, I wanna master what we're agreeing to and, and. We don't, and, and we'll say, we should see amount district board is determined is necessary.
No, you can, so you can also, yeah, but you can also remove.
Though the other language about equalized pupil stuff, because that just makes no one ever understood that. I had to spend half an hour explaining every year. I don't know what. Now, you could. Note what your last year's expenditure is. If you feel like we're gonna have trouble selling this, but I don't think we're gonna have trouble selling this, if you, you know, you say it's a reduction now, but it's. Also deceptive to say that when taxes will actually nickel up a bit, especially for Athens, so I just assume ship it out unless you want me to put it in.
I, I think, I, I leave that to.
Well, then it's a political decision.
We haven't done that with any of our other.
Then what's not, okay, done, all right. And article two, by the way, will ask to borrow the money, but the.
We need two other.
Right, we do.
And which is to get the surplus monies in there. And I, I've written them up, they're on my sheet of paper, on the page, the first two articles up there. Tell the voters of the W N U E S D school district to apply the sum of seventy five thousand, seventy five thousand dollars. From the fiscal year two thousand twenty one fund balance of three fifty, three thirty. Dollars to reduce expenditures in the fiscal year two thousand twenty four. I think you could just copy that from that.
Yeah, just give me a second, where does that, because I, I did it differently, but I like hers better.
And then the, the second one would be, shall the voters of the W, W N U E S D. School district apply up to the sum of a hundred and six, oh, oh, five dollars. From the anticipated W N E S U surplus for two thousand twenty two to reduce expenditures in the fiscal year two thousand twenty four.
Right, and again, we can, in number two, we can take out the educations, we don't need any of the language for education spending. And as again, I, I, I would recommend just ditching that, if we're gonna take it out one place, you should take it out everywhere. If you don't mind. I think that we are obliged. To explain this in, maybe not this level of detail, but some level of detail, pre-town meeting on the twenty, whatever it is, twenty four, twenty. And, and walk people, yeah, and walk people through this, but it doesn't have to be and shouldn't be here because frankly, it's, it distorts. The, yes. Do we need to change the third article that?
Yeah, yeah, so that I've sort of brought that off.
The one, seven, five, six.
Made it with this one, seven, five, six, and we're not putting in a lot of it.
So, let me just, just hold on. Now. We, we will, I'm, I'm gonna write it in while we're doing this in real time here. And you, I like your language better and I put some of it in the district meeting as opposed to this meeting, but let's just move it all over. Just wanna check one thing here. Didn't use the term. Okay, balance of three fifty, I've got, I'd had, I'd had some language in about the auditor that will cut that. Frankly, this is. Cleaner. So, just to confirm. Got one, the second, because that's second paragraph and this is, yeah, so I'll.
The, the one, the long one there, the third one, we shouldn't be using, because that's the one that we changed to the one billion, so.
Yeah, you, all, all you need to do is just change the dollar amount and then eliminate the last.
Just, just, just make sure.
And they, per, equalized pupil numbers.
So we're, just.
This one's good, this one's good. This is the one that needs to change. Now this one is for two thousand twenty five.
Yeah, two thousand twenty five, you had to do it in twenty, two thousand twenty four, but keep all this stuff to remind people what they agree on. Because one of the things we don't have in our school boards, which I'm hoping. Party's gonna help fix next year is long-term planning, where you've got a long-term budget. And people can see at least what they thought they were doing the previous year, so that there isn't amnesia. We don't have missing twenty nineteen monies and doing all this stuff going forward. So, all right. We're, we just. I'm not getting. Where is my? That's mine, all right, so. That concludes the approval of the question.
Did you, did you vote?
Oh, we, hi, we have to vote on this, so, Hardy, you wanna take your shot?
I move that we approve the expenditure budget. For the W N U E S D for two thousand twenty four at one million, seven fifty six, seven hundred and ninety three.
Thanks for pointing out that we hadn't actually voted on. Krista would say you?
I.
Hi, all right, we've got eyes all the way around the house. All right, so that's, with that. And thank you for all this, we're gonna have to do that allocation business also, as I say, we have to prove that.
Do we, do we have to spread the whole five hundred, you know, fifty thousand surplus that we think we're gonna be reporting? We have to provide it. Now, that's my, in the warnings.
Is this an audited, is it an audited, then it's not there until it's audited.
I suppose the two hundred and five, we don't know what that is.
Yeah, so you can't refer to it, because it's a legal.
So we don't wanna get the results until after the.
Well, there is a, Hardy, there's a reason why for the last couple of years, since we've been having these audit issues for a while. So what, there's a reason why we've not been in a super rush to, to have our district meetings. Because I kinda wanna have a district meeting after you've got an audit to take here, and then when you've got that audit to take here, you don't need to, guys, you're gonna all need to know that. After March, is, you know, you'll have a reconstituted board. When that happens, your reconstituted board is gonna have to warn another, a district meeting bodies in building here probably. And that's when you're going to have that audited number and you're going to have a vote in your warning. Where people get to talk about it at the district meeting to agree to that allocation. Okay, y'all got it?
The allocation of a surplus.
Yeah, all right, that's how that, that, because you can't allocate money, you can't promise, you can't, you can't promise it's there, right?
So we do know that we have three fifty, three, three oh, that you have to allocate that, right?
That you do. Although you can wait to do that if you want to, but I wouldn't, because it could affect your tax rate, you probably wanna get that done now. So, go ahead, Cheryl.
It was just a question, you're talking about not yet warning an article about the. W N E S U surplus, that's the surplus you're talking about?
Yeah.
But you are going to, including your warnings, the twenty one and the twenty two surplus figures, is that correct? Even though twenty two isn't superficial, it's, I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, that minus had been yes.
Right, and so all the things that Hardy was talking about with respect to use of the surplus of the numbers, everybody is pretty confident of, but you're waiting. For the S U numbers, and that is helpful for the long run.
You can't represent something as the number until you have an attest and.
Right.
To that effect, absolutely, and that is just your bottom line, because otherwise, this technically it's fraud, you know, you can't do it.
I, I would just say for the, for everybody, that we did this, we took the same approach in Westminster that we proposed in the articles. To use surplus monies from those prior years, but not the new, not yet audited.
Yeah, you, you, you can't, you, and you know, and that, we all know this goofy washing machine that the state does, where you get the numbers. Then the district board approves the numbers, then they send them to the state, they sit and mold for eight months. And then they tell, send you back up, these are your numbers, and then you can spend it, so you go, so you're always that year, you know.
So I have a question, stupid question, but.
There is no stupid question.
Who holds this, all this surplus money, the S U? Is it?
Oh, you're, no, see that.
The state holds this surplus money. How do they, how do we know they're gonna spend it on something else?
I mean, well, the guarantee is just like, just like when you put money in a bank. The bank can use your money, that's sitting, the, the money you put in the bank, the money, they, they loan it out or they invest it everywhere, but when you say you want your money back, they have to give you your money back. Right, so the state's holding your money, they've probably invested it somewhere and they're making money on your money, but when you say I want it back, they have to give it back to you.
The only issue that's ever come up on this, and it was ages and you just go. Was somebody basically tried to just do a blind roll over, we're gonna save this money for future taxes, and their day basically did a fine rollover. State said, oh, 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 no, you can't do that, you have to, you have to state, you have to put a stated purpose, even if it's kind of smushy around the edges. And you also have to remember, but this is a bottom line budget, not a line item budget. Monies that we have put into those boxes for, for renovation or whatever, tuition. That, those are in accounting boxes, but you can buy a vote of your board if you needed to. Move that money as some future debt, you're not, you, 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 as a board cannot obligate. A future board to either save money or to pay money. Is a good faith, you're basically making a good faith promise, but you're not, but it's not a legal obligation. Because state, because towns have done that in the past, or, or, or school districts have done that in the past.
So, so a future board could vote to take the money out of capital reserve and put it somewhere else.
That's right.
But, Hardy, you made some allocations, but.
Those are my allocations, I mean, they're, yeah, some stone, but we, what I'm saying is we need those couple of alloc. If we're gonna keep our tax rate in line.
Yeah, and, and, and you need to, you need to declare something like that if you don't want, you know, the state, and you don't want. Beth or whoever, the auditor is, the treasurer is these days, go, ah, ah, ah. Because like I said, I think it was Rutland did that like ages ago and they kind of.
So you can put it all in capital reserve?
Yeah.
You can say, I'm gonna take this three hundred thousand dollars and put it in the capital reserve and not even address the issue. Of offsetting taxes or anything like that, or you can say we wanna put, as Hardy said, we wanna put a little bit towards each tax in the future and, and just go that way.
Right, I mean, to some extent, the thing is you, you can't. State doesn't really want you to be really doing what we're doing, doesn't really want you to roll up the big surplus and then, then, then titrate it out, though if you're a small school, you kinda have to, right? So, but you have to put it somewhere, so we put it somewhere. But if in the year twenty twenty six, you run into a hole, you've got some money that you desperately need to use from somewhere.
So, so that clarifies this a little bit for me, because I, this is all new to me too. So what we're saying is we need the seventy five thousand this year, we need a hundred and fifty next year. And we're using fourteen thousand, one forty for our tuition reserve and three thousand, four hundred and seventeen for our capital reserve. And I would say we got a hundred and seven thousand, seven, seventy three left. It should go into the capital reserve based on this discussion, which can be used.
Right, or you could put it into, for future boards to use at their discretion, but like, the language, you just have to name what.
You just have to name.
But we're not, are we certain that the state's not gonna come and take what we wanna put in reserve?
As you have allocated that they don't have, unless they change the law, because it's legislature, that your money has been, it, it's been named, it's been allocated. It's in our books, it's allocated, it's like the business of, what do you call it, when you, when you, you've got your money and then you, what's the term I'm looking for? When you, when you, when you attach, but when you attach the expenditure before you actually spend. So it's, it's basically you're encumbered, you're, you're putting an encumbrance on as far as the state's concerned, and as long as that encumbrance is there, they can't touch it.
They can't touch it.
But, but all the state can do is give it back to the taxpayers.
They can give it back to taxpayers?
No, no. Your county members have raised the money for thems, for themselves to fund their school. If you don't allocate it for anything, it eventually goes back to your taxpayers. It to offset taxes in, in that whole thing, but the state doesn't say, oh, we got a hundred thousand dollars, let's now go buy a new vehicle or something. They can't use your money anyway.
So it goes back to the towns?
Well, it goes back to taxpayers, but here's the thing. That if I get, if I get a hundred thou, say I get ten thousand back, you know, this year taxes, parade, wonderful thing. If by getting that ten thousand back, I get to spend six thousand more, because I've got all this S S spending penalty. That's not winning anything to your taxpayers, the whole point of this exercise is to keep the penalty. In its own, keep it small and in the box, and to stretch that out as long as humanly possible, that's what you're trying to do. So. There, we're back, we are on warnings and articles, I believe. So, or no, did we finish up the business of the allocations?
Well, the surplus, there's a hundred and seven thousand that we need to put somewhere, either in the capital reserve or. Whatever, however you want to.
So you're gonna need an article for the seventy five thousand, if you wanna do that for the twenty four budget. You're gonna need an article for the hundred and fifty thousand for the two, twenty twenty five budget.
One, the last one.
Right, number two there. If you, if you agree to, you, you can put the fourteen thousand into a tuition reserve, you don't need an article for that.
Right.
Right.
You can put the thirty four hundred dollars into a capital reserve, you do not need an article for that.
Right, right.
And then you're gonna have about a hundred and seven thousand dollars after all of that, so you'll need an article. To either put that into a capital reserve to be used by future boards, or, you know, to, to. So you could just leave it that bluntly, you know, like, you know, to put into a capital reserve to be used by future boards at their discretion. And so then the boards can, the future board can decide if they wanna apply that to.
Tax rates.
Tax rates in, in twenty twenty six, you can also. If you wanted to, because other boards have done this, say you wanna apply that a hundred and seven thousand dollars to twenty twenty six, do an article and say. We're just gonna apply it to the tax rate in twenty twenty six.
Wouldn't that be the safest in the do?
I, I. I mean, it would be locked into the taxes for twenty twenty six, but it'd be locked in. I mean, it would be locked into the taxes for twenty twenty six, but it'd be locked in, but you're gonna need it, you're gonna need that money probably in more. So, because I would say, you're gonna need some from the next one. So like, yeah, yeah, so like in Rockingham, last year, they did like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for like a bazillion years out, right? Like five years out, to be honest with you, and so then this year, because we still have funds, they're most likely gonna look at an article. Of taking the like three fifty, adding another hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, and then add a. Another year for five hundred thousand dollars, cause they've got some big reserves still, and so they're gonna add to. What they already put aside, and then they're gonna still have money, then, then they're gonna have a chunk, and they're gonna put that all into capital reserve, for capital. That's how they're balancing out, but they're looking at five to six years out.
We.
Twenty twenty nine, twenty twenty, twenty thirty.
We actually thought they couldn't do it, and I I that I had pushed on that, I didn't think they could do it.
I know you did.
And, but, they did it, and nobody called them on it. So my view is, if you wanted to do that, take this hundred and seven thousand dollars. And reduce fiscal expenditures in the year beginning twenty twenty five, FY twenty twenty five. That might cover you.
Well, I already got, we got a hundred fifty ordered to twenty.
Twenty five, right.
So that would go into twenty twenty six, the one oh seven.
If if you wa, if you wanted to, like earmark it for something, or if you, your board really consider like, hey, that makes sense.
Well, it would, it would also show up in your report. Uh uh, cause we're gonna actually show these now, uh, so that people will see that that money's in that column. Uh, and that will guide their fiscal decisions in those future years, cause if you, so if you put it into a.
A capital reserve, a future board could be like, we wanna. Put an addition on the building, so we're gonna use that hundred and seven thousand for that, I mean, but if you're trying to help secure them in the future. Is to put it for twenty twenty six.
So I would suggest capital reserve to, to reserve it, to reduce expenditures in the fiscal year beginning twenty twenty.
Six, yep, and then that also helps with that cliff.
Yeah.
Right, so you're you're not, all of a sudden, let's say for some reason, all your, all your numbers, you know, like. They don't, at least you've got something kind of allocated.
The the the.
I think it's a safety net.
Uh, well, my basic thing is, I wanna, I wanna preserve the sanity of my superintendent in principle. And though, I can't guarantee those things, I can at least try to make sure that they've got some. Level of predictability going out, and you know, it doesn't say that a future board can't, you know. Start hacking away and adding money to stuff, but uh this at least gives everybody a model, so uh. So I need, I need a.
Just a question then, uh before you make that, is, so if we lock it in that one oh seven.
Yeah.
For twenty six.
Yeah.
Then, then that locks it so that. Future boards cannot touch.
It locks.
It locks it in.
Well, it locks it in in the sense that, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's, you're guiding a future board.
Yep.
But you're not obliging.
Yeah, but we can't force them to do that, cause there are another board and.
There you go.
Yeah, but.
And they have the authority.
But again, the only reason I could see a a future board potentially. Moving away from that is, let's say something could happen catastro, yeah, catastrophically here, and they needed money. To do that, they got, they can withdraw that money from there, you know. A car comes through your wall.
Well, would that, would that take a vote, are the voters, or can the board?
Cause they've already allowed you.
Right, cause you you have the right to decide what a capital reserve is for.
But I still like.
So I'm, I'm gonna be looking for a motion for what will be another article. To uh apply some of a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Seven hundred, seven seventy three.
Seven seventy three. Three, um. Uh, from the, from the anticipated surplus of this year, I I would, what's?
Yeah, it's from the three hundred and fifty, three three oh.
Oh, okay, alright, from the, from the, yes. For the, so essentially the same language right up until that language, to reduce expenditures in the uh beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Yes.
Okay, and that that covers that, so that's, that's the solution, so I need a motion.
I make a motion that we do that.
Alright, or second it, alright, so uh, all in favor, Krista, what say you?
I.
I.
I, I.
Alright, let's see the maker of the motion, alright, great, uh, I can leave. Uh, this is, this is good stuff, people, um, those are all going to, since I tidy them up. Being the warning, we're gonna have to approve the warning with these articles, that we're gonna walk, it's gonna redo this and walk through some of this. In addition, you need a couple other things for your warning. Okay, you need. District. To approve a, an article to allow your school district board to. Borrow money as needed in anticipation, any payments or receipts from state or Vermont, US federal government or tax tax fund. So we'll hit that one in a minute.
Is that the one million seven fifty six?
No, no, this is saying. The town of Grafton, the town, the town of Athens has occasionally been a little slow getting the money over here in the. State's been occasionally a little slow getting money, you have to have a way of meeting payroll while it's sitting on the hands. So this allow, this allows you to borrow money in anticipation of taxes is the term of.
So you don't give a figure to it, you just.
Just says. Cause you borrowing it.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um, now. We have a potential item, last year, we allowed, we had uh on the May twenty sixth. Allowed the board to set compensation. For for board members, and we did, well, I can't remember what dollar amount it was.
I don't think there was any amount, I think we just made a motion to.
Right, we did, but. We passed a figure, and I can't remember what it was, it was a little sketchy, but we, the question is, do we set a number? And do that, or do you wanna wait and do that in your uh, your district meeting? Say in heaven.
I I would, I would suggest you just have it on there. Okay. As opposed, cause, cause we're sitting around here going, we don't know what it was last.
Well, it's cause I can't remember.
So I would have it on there so that we remember.
Well, yeah.
No, that's on TV.
Okay, um.
Cause we didn't get compensation this year, right?
You should have, cause we passed.
We haven't though.
But we haven't.
Well, we passed on the first meeting, we passed numbers, and I. What they were, and I was gonna ask Nicole what happened with that, Nicole, some point tomorrow, let's figure out what happened with that.
I will, yeah, I will look into that, because I did, I went through the minutes and I didn't see where any dollar amount was set. But I will double check it.
Like I sworn, we did five hundred dollars and like.
No.
And and like six fifty, sure, well, see, you came in part of it, you came in. Yeah, and we didn't do a monthly, so we didn't break it up for a month, so you'd have been, you know, you'd have, thank you for your service. But but we did, we did pass them, so the question is, you need to have numbers for the following people. To let you know, have a moderator, I think we've spent fifty bucks or something like that, you need a treasurer, treasurer actually does work. And whether it's a hundred and fifty or whatever it is, you need to, you, somebody. You need to pay people for that, uh, you need a district clerk. Uh, Tim's done it, but I don't know if we paid Kim last year, and I think we uh told her we would. Now you need a a board member number, a board chair number. And if you're smart, you'll have a stipend for people go to the S U board meetings, cause you're doing two thirds of the work at the S U board. Especially if you, we stick you on committees, um, so. We need an article to that effect, what say you, I I said moderator fifty bucks, how often was, how often do the treasurer people show up? And do stuff for you?
Once a month.
Okay, so they're always showing up once a month, so you have two, two fifty, three hundred, you actually give them something. That's the number.
Just at least show them we appreciate.
So.
So, so Westminster.
Yeah.
If you want some kind of guides, Westminster uh compensates their school directors at eight hundred dollars each. With an additional two hundred dollars to the, to the board chair, and it's all, that's how they wrote that article.
Yeah, does it, do they give treasurer money or?
That's how they require it.
That was it.
That's all we put in there. Um, and then, what, um. As far as, um. What's, what's down there? No, um, Rockingham.
Yeah.
What Rockingham did was eight hundred to the chair, seven hundred to members, and five hundred to a treasurer. So that's how they worded theirs, um, and then, um. So you can see we're really consistent across that. And then with um, the high school, that. Um, the board chair gets seven fifty, board members gets six fifty, the district treasurer gets eight hundred, and the district clerk gets a hundred and twenty five. So that's how each of the articles have been worn so far, so. We're, we're about as consistent as mud. And 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 across the board, but um, you know, if a member is is on this board, but also serves on. High school board, theoretically. They should be paid for both boards.
I was gonna say, when I was on both boards, sharing them both.
So you don't have to worry about, you, you as a board, don't need to worry about compensating someone for being on the high school board.
No, I'm talking about the S U, because of what I'm saying is, you've been, this the, and this is just my view, but what do I know? Uh, having been in the boardsters one year, but the the reality is that the district boards. Do work, but increasingly as we're consolidating functions, you know. Personnel stuff is increasingly now handled by the personnel uh committee, the finance. A lot of it's done collectively by the finance committee, they're gonna own a long term plan, so they got. They got a lot of work to do, uh, the uh, the uh policy stuff is all. Hand, you know, done for us by the S U policy committee. I mean, we get the ultimate, yay or nay, change it, but the, you know, the laundry's being washed by the S U committees. And I think the end, I think that's, um, it's like being on another board. Effectively, you're you're on the S U.
So just if you want consistent with being inconsistent, because nobody else has has done anything for an S U board. Is to, is to come up with whatever your, whatever the compensation for being on this board, and then if you wanna say. What have in there like another hundred dollars or something for being on the S U board, cause that's, that's, that's worthwhile.
Yeah.
Um, um, but then, you could have that on there, so then whomever is on the S U board would get. Maybe, maybe you can, you can wag the dog and other boards will follow.
Well, well, he, well, here's the thing.
I'll talk to you.
Well, here, he, well, here, here's, here's the thing. When we paid them, we paid people nothing to be on the S U board, we couldn't get anything done at the S U board. It would always be a, who was available from the local district, so there's no consistency, you can't get it, you couldn't move the mountain. And we have, you know, within relative accomplishments last year, one of the things I've done is try to get. Joint committees and get them to actually do some work, and they're doing a ton of it.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't disagree with you at all, I think, I think just what you said, as we try to move towards more of this consolidation piece of. Not really consolidate, but but unifying things more so that it's. That there is, you know, the the work even that, you know, Hardy did on the, on the S U finance committee, I mean, it it. It helps drive.
Yep.
And, cause ultimately, what happens at the S U is gonna drive some of your budget, so.
Well, and the endless discussions we used to have, minutia policy, and had no policies in common, it was just a nightmare, we cleaned that up. You know, we had, let's say, I got something for you to do, and basically, through that, I had heard, and through that, you, and through that, the other folks. And it really made a difference, and if you're gonna put in that kind of time.
Yeah.
I want you to get paid, and maybe we're the only people that pay our, uh, pay our S U board members, I'm okay with that. Uh, it just says we value their time.
Absolutely.
Value our time, and if they don't value theirs, well, that's their issue.
Yep, we're paying you for the extra miles.
Alright, so, so, I'm going, since everybody's sitting here, I'm gonna say moderator fifty bucks, treasurer two hundred. Bucks, district clerk, two fifty, board member, five. Tell me if you don't like these numbers, by the way, this is your chance to speak up. Six, okay, Hardy, Hardy, if he wants me, it's time, uh, board chair, um.
There's a, there's a consistency of about a hundred fifty bucks extra, yeah, so make it.
Hardy, what do you, what do you want for board chair next year? Okay, seven fifty it is, uh, I can't nominate people, but that was kind of close, and uh. Additional stipend for uh S U board members, two fifty three, two fifty, got it, alright. So I'm will, I'm.
They pay for your gas.
You might, alright, so I'm, so we will need to set these. We have an article that says, shall the compensation for elected officials of the W N E S. Be fixed at the following annual levels for the period following their election. Just district moderator fifty dollars, district treasurer two hundred, district clerk two fifty, cause they actually have work to do. Uh, board member six hundred, or chair seven fifty, additional stipend for members of the S U board, two fifty.
Yep.
Um. What he said, uh, second?
Sure.
Alright, all in favor?
I.
I.
Hey, I I gotta tell you.
That is what you're saying.
That's a, that's somebody else's problem next year, um, alright, and we'll change the. Edition of the surplus language that I wrote in favor of the stuff we've now cut, um, so what else we get on the morning? Um, let's see.
Tuition rate?
Oh yeah, tuition rate.
It's not part of your warning.
No, but we. Thank you, but I'm gonna get this, I'm gonna get distracted, it's a budget vote elected, uh, election, so we got the article. Of the one, seven, five, six, et cetera, we have the borrowing authority. We are now gonna have an article three with these compensation figures, which I'll chuck in it. Um, but you have the, um, and because, somebody who's your chair. Didn't clarify the language as to the terms for the people we nominated in, um. In May, we're going to have two men. I'm gonna suggest that we have shell voters elected, the voters are asked to elect by ballot following board members on the district. Two members preserved for residents of Athens and elected at large for our. To serve a two year term beginning in March twenty twenty three and serving in George Town meeting day of two twenty five. And the same thing for the two members preserved for uh residents of Grafton.
So it's two years for each, not two and.
Well, hence the discussion we're having right now, we have people that will be ending their term, if. Uh, we have people ending their term now, we certainly have two people ending their term now. And and one, and one the following year, so the question is, you know. How do we wanna do that, when we are separate boards, we'd have people elected in, you know, one, yeah, one every third year.
Yeah, you don't want everyone being.
Well, the problem is, we don't have any, we've got authorization for two year terms, we didn't set up anything in any real language for a third. We didn't set up anything in any real language for a third year, for a three-year term.
Right, but you said two people for a two-year term. That would, so that, that would mean you're re-electing every two years almost all an entirely.
And then you're electing two people the following year, but how, how would you? I'm looking for some suggestions here, cause I.
So last, last year, what you had in there was. One member for a one-year term, or this is two years ago, pardon me, so one member for, um. A one year and then one member for a two-year. And so if you've got.
That was when we had. That was for, because that worked because we had Athens, I mean, we had, uh, Westminster.
Right.
And when we took Westminster out.
But if you've got five people on your board.
You have six people on our board.
Three on each, three on each side.
Three, three.
Three and three. Oh, sorry, I forgot to copy first, um, so when I was like, I was like, so if you have three and three, then you're gonna have to, gotta figure a stagger or something.
Well, the question, oh yeah.
I, I thought in past talks, we had talked about this year voting the two that are up.
Yeah.
One two-year term and one, one for a three-year term.
Well, the thing is, I don't have any legal authorization to do that, that's the problem.
Why can't we?
Because we, you can take, you can modify your articles. You modify your articles at your district meeting. It's why we should have the district meeting in February. Or, or November or some other time. And then you could do that.
Oh.
Problem is, we didn't do it, cause I'd forgotten all about it. Until like. Today, and so we've still, we've got all the seats.
So, so if you, if you do the two-year, two people, two years, you still got two people, one in each town that are, one more year left, so you got some stagger.
You got some, that's, that's okay, I just, I was worried.
So, but, but the question I have is, Krista, did you? Next year?
I'm sorry, did I what?
Your papers.
Have a petition for.
I haven't submitted my papers yet, I was gonna submit one on Monday.
Monday is your deadline, just want, I needed to know, I need to know you're there. Just because what I don't wanna have happen is what I'm worried is gonna happen to high school, where if you don't get people to fill it in, you're not gonna have a forum, uh, at your organizing meeting.
Well, I'm just wondering if Krista should put on her paper. For two years and not for one. Could I put on my paper for one year?
I was planning to do a one-year term, are we, is it gonna be two years?
That's what I'm trying to. Right now.
Yeah. I'm not running against you, Harold.
Point, I need to. I'm on, are you gonna have one for one year and one for two years, or you're gonna have two for?
Right, so you have one year left, right?
No, I'm ending, I just did my petition, I thought it was three years.
Huh?
I thought she said three years, not.
Now you know why I was having, I have a knife with this.
So we may need to work with that out and maybe not. Like.
Not tonight, but.
Try and figure it out.
No, the call, yeah.
Yeah.
But she handed me the.
But can I change, can I go to Hannah and have that changed to two years then?
I, I would have to seek legal advice, I don't know.
Okay, because I mean.
I'm being honest with you. Here, 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 the good news is. The good news is you don't have to worry about your petitions. For a couple of days, the bad news is I have to have a warning tonight. That's the bad news. So I've gotta, I've gotta have terms for this.
Okay, so.
What legally do we have to do?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're drafting, Lynn's drafting?
No, Lynn's, uh, Lynn's Athens, she's a three-year member, so.
So, what, Athens, 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 drafting, drafting.
Sorry, I apologize, so you got one more year left at least?
As far as like, that's what I've been told.
Yeah, so you're, 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 you've got a year left, so, so.
I would then, what I would advise is do the two-year ones. And then if, if Krista, for some reason, some personal reason, she has to move on after a year, then she can still do that.
We can clean, we can, we can change the terms afterwards.
You need something tonight, so you've got two people who are gonna stay on for sure, the rest of you can get voted off or whatever.
Yeah, and I'm gonna suggest to, I'll, I'll talk to Kim to explain to her that, that you were two-year term, did you have all your stuff filled out of? Oh, but.
Yeah, no, it's all sent in, I sent it in last week.
We will.
So, so I, it's now I understand what your thinking was, I'm sorry, I thought you did that, so because you got two people. If you do the other people with two-year terms, I mean, that at least give you some flexibility.
Right, and so, you can always reach, we can touch this up later.
So you would need to adjust yours to a two.
So I need to go to Hannah on Monday and. Change mine from one year to two years.
Correct, yeah.
And Krista is gonna do her two years.
Krista, if, if, if your life circumstances happen to be that you can only do one year, I, I'm sure you could.
Yeah, I don't. I, I don't foresee any life circumstance happening, I had just thought that. I only, I thought that my seat was a one-year seat, that's the only reason. It's not that I foresee anything happening, I had just thought that my seat was a one-year seat, that's all.
You were. A one-year seat because you were a write-in. So you were essentially.
Ah.
And when we, when somebody, no, well, you were. You were one year because you were, you, your term was to expire either at town meeting. Vote or the next district vote, whichever happened first. So that's how that got dealt with, that's the issue, that's, that's same thing as he's.
Side to make, right.
Uh, and that was because we were advised. That. Whenever a board fills a seat on an interim basis, and these were considered interim basis, it can be only for one year, you cannot oblige.
Right, you can't, you, you can only go up to the next meeting.
Right, right, so.
So I've got to hand her to change that to ten.
Okay, all right, so anyway, now that we all got it. And I'm sorry, cause I really owe him that. Uh.
Yes, you do.
No, thank you. Beat me, beat me.
In a perfect world, you'd have like threes and twos, and that way you would maintain consistency.
Well, point is, at some point, you know, your district's gonna have to tie that up if they want to. Um. Hard, hardly, it's hard, I'm over here. You know, if you think, you have a hard time, imagine what I did to Cheryl, so, uh, you know.
That's one of those.
So, all right.
They're still working on it.
To, to moving on, let me just go ahead. Uh, we've got, we fixed the article three to actually have the numbers. Uh, and the voters will be asked to, two members reserved for Athens, elected at large. Two-year term, getting March twenty twenty-three, serving until town meeting day twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Two members reserved for Grafton, same deal. And. That is it unless. There is, and we've got all the current fund disposition stuff. Um. And that, that's it.
Should we agree?
Uh, oh, no, no, we gotta, you have, you have to.
Yep.
You have to read. To the articles in the following warning shall include. The stuff we just did, please don't make me reread it. Uh, and I will. So we'll need to gain any vote on that, and then I'm going to circulate the printed version of this for your signatures in the next day or two.
Okay.
Okay, that's how this works.
So I'm making motion that we.
Approve the, approve the article.
Articles that Jack is.
Of the warning. And, and let's discuss. Uh, without objection?
Right.
A second, all right, all in favor, Krista?
Aye.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Set and done on this day. All right, um.
Announced tuition.
And now, yeah, so we're done, announced tuition. Now. Couple of things on that, just, we have a tuition rate that we can charge. And that number is what, sir?
Thirty-nine thousand.
Right, I think that announcing tuition rate of thirty-nine thousand gets you a headline in the public. And it's not one I want us to have. Because, God, no. So you can set that tuition rate, any number you want, you can set it for a dollar, but the thing that you might want to do. Is say, what is, what is the average tuition rate for elementary schools in your area? And knowing that.
It's, it's going coming from another school, right?
So it means, I, I am a, I am a poor. Family who's decided that. Springfield Elementary School is not a school for me. And I'm looking at the grammar school or a school with better student teacher. In elementary, now, where shall I go? Question is. What should the tuition be, because we're not, our costs are not gonna go up if we add one kid or two kids or five kids to this school. So it's free money. The question is. Would we actually get some, and what should the number be?
Eighteen.
What he said, he told you, you got an objection? Anybody get an objection?
That pretty standard?
Yeah, the, what, what's the state setting there, Jack, um, Jim, I can't. It's about eighteen, that's the, that's the state average that independent schools are, are. So you'd be ready.
Well, you want it for the independent school?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
We're paying.
Well, we, 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 we're paying twenty-one thousand five thirty-five.
Right, but here's the thing, here's the thing. What is your added cost per student?
Zero.
That's the thing, so literally anything.
So that's a surplus of eighteen thousand.
So. That's, that's free money.
An additional teacher or anything of that nature, cause you, you're not, you know, if you had class sizes that one, twenty, already. Then you might wanna set it high to discourage.
Allows.
Anyone from home and in.
But if you, but if you only get six kids in your kindergarten, man, you want, you want two one nine.
I can go with that, eighteen.
Okay.
Has that ever, has Grafton ever had that, where a student chooses from another town?
Yeah.
Situation then?
Absolutely, and, and frankly, this coming year, I'd like us to talk about it.
We need to, we need to, uh, put something together to publicize.
Yeah.
You know.
Aggressively.
The advantages of coming to Grafton.
We're great.
I'm, I'm totally for that, because we. You know, that, that, that's, that's gonna show up in your October count, you know, if not, well.
Yeah, and that is a good thing.
Yeah. So. There you go.
I mean, why, why Grafton Elementary campaign?
Yeah. There you go.
Will Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, seriously.
No, I'm, I'm. I've been, I've been saying you should have, you should have a literature at every real estate. Uh, you know, present the area.
Exactly, when you're buying a house.
Buying a house, cause a housing price here really can't cheap considering, uh. Sorry, they really are, uh, and, uh, uh, my kid, my, ask my kids in, uh, in Lexington what they cost. The, uh, uh, and, and we should be encouraging people to move in the community, and we start with that, come three years, like the place people will live here.
Now, what is the chances? You know, I know it's been a discussion over lately of, uh, the school choice thing. Now, with towns, for example. Let's say Brookline decides, somebody from Brookline wants to send a child up here, does Brookline pay that eighteen?
If they have, if they have school choice.
If they have the school choice.
They're gonna pay, they're gonna pay whatever your announced tuition rate is.
Yeah, so, because the school choice, they, that, that is a, there was still a big hot issue up in my period, right?
Well, you, you've got.
Are you, you talking about the?
The state, the state going with the school choice thing, or is it just?
Are you talking about, uh, the latest? Um, Supreme Court ruling?
Yeah.
That, um, with, that, that, that is being discussed, but that's around money's going to independent schools.
Oh, that's independent, that's not public.
Yeah, okay, so, so that, that's.
Well, wouldn't it automatically go also to public school?
But what was it also, parochial?
That, that's where I was getting to, independent schools are parochial schools also, and, and, and federal and state dollars, public dollars going to, um. You know, um, parochial type schools, and so that's being looked into, the, that was the court case. That said you have to do it, and then there's. But the, the way, um. The way the Vermont law is written, there might be an opportunity to not have to do that, and, um, I can actually share. The, the BSA put together a, uh, an actual slideshow on, on tuition that might help answer some of that question. But technically speaking, if a family from Chester. Wanted to send their child here. Chester will not pay. Cause they have their own school.
Right.
So the family would have to pay.
Yeah.
But, but if a. But if a, if Chester had school choice K through twelve. Then that family could take their, take a voucher anywhere, and they would have to pay whatever your announced tuition.
Uh, the, uh, the towns that where this has been dithered around with was when. There was that whole independent school business up in Wyndham. Uh, which I don't, I don't think that ever. Mounted, they, they never closed that building, right? It, uh, and. Uh, Charlotte Partridge won her battle at the end of all that, and, and, and. I think those are the only two, but the point simply is, if I'm, if I don't like Springfield, or I don't like going on in Fairmont. Uh, I want us, I want us to position as a reasonable choice to the grammar school, especially right now, and, uh, that would be a thing.
So shouldn't we set our tuition lower to make it more attractive?
The families had to pay it themselves?
Well, the thing is.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, cause like, uh, wouldn't it? If, if we're actually serious about trying to appeal to people that are buying a house here, and they're gonna see a pamphlet at the real estate office. Isn't it to, if we're serious about that, isn't it to our benefit to set tuition low, especially since it's not necessarily costing us more per, per pupil to have them here?
You know, the only thing I would challenge you on that a little bit is, if someone's buying a house here. So if they're buying a house here, their child will come to school. Because it's the.
I mean, like Chester, like in the area, like if they're, if they're right on the line and they're, they're shopping around, and they're gonna be the one that's having to pay, or somebody's choosing between. The grammar school or another private option, isn't it in our interest to then be the financially savvy option as well?
So if, if you're going after the market of families that are looking already at private education. Um, you wanna. Oh, yeah, you wanna market yourself a little lower than private education. Cause you're really trying to attract people.
Well, I, I think we have to decide if we're trying to go after the market of people that are trying to. Decide between us and like the, the grammar school, or if we're trying to get other families that would be willing to pay out of pocket, but don't have as much money as, as it would cost to send it to a traditional private school. Cause there's a big difference between asking a family to pay five grand and fifteen.
Oh, that's, that's for policy decision, what are you, you guys, we, we just, can we just agree to eighteen, or did we?
You can, you can resend that and. Make another one.
I don't think anybody, nobody truly officially made a motion for that, I think that's. I mean, yours wasn't really an emotion, I think, I think you just set out a number.
Okay, well, okay, so, party, what do, what do you wanna, what do you wanna charge the, uh, the, the people?
Well, I'm gonna leave it to other people now, I threw out a number, it'd be fifteen, I, I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm just.
Where the other school?
So, um. Thirty-five?
Thousand?
Hey, hey, I, uh. Maybe that's.
It's fifteen thousand three hundred for kindergarten, just for straight tuition, is what their website says.
Thought it was a lot more than that, it's fifteen.
That's just straight tuition, I guess there's, there's, so the twenty twenty-two, the twenty twenty-three rate for five full days. Of preschool is fourteen thousand five hundred, kindergarten is fifteen thousand three hundred. And then the highest would be. For like our school level would be sixth grade, which is eighteen thousand nine hundred.
Adulines step in, so kindergarten's fifteen three. And sixth grade is eighteen nine, looks like it goes up, you know, it, it doesn't go up equally each year, but it's about six hundred bucks.
A year?
A year increase.
This is a grammar school.
This is a grammar school, so their, their lowest tuition is fifteen three, their highest tuition is eighteen nine. So. Where do we have the least number of kids? So if you set your tuition around fifteen thousand dollars, you would be competitive with the grammar school.
Yeah.
You cannot have your tuition at different rates per grade.
No.
But they do.
Yeah, but they're, they're a private school, we. You should think, you think, you think. Uh, I'll show you the bill. They have base rate, but you end up paying for everything, including, you know.
I'm saying the days that.
Krista, you wanna make a motion for the fifteen?
Do you all think that that's low enough?
I think it's pretty, I think it's.
I think that'd be comparable.
If, if you're gonna be cutting, if you're gonna be cutting the check, I, I'm making the argument, we'll give them a better education.
Okay, as long as, as long as everybody thinks that that's a, a competitive amount. All right, I, I make the motion that our annual tuition rate be set at fifteen thousand dollars per pupil.
Okay, uh, so fifteen is what I'm hearing, going once, going twice, uh, I guess. Um, fifteen you, fifteen you, and you got fifteen all around there, tuition rate is fifteen thousand dollars, and we're gonna, we're gonna be putting out pamphlets. All right, out of, out of money, we also haven't figured out where to allocate it.
Um, Jim, you mentioned thirty-nine thousand, is that including all the school, all the kids?
That.
People cost?
That includes your cost, except for the tuitions that you pay.
So that is, that is basically, in other words, we pay tuition to go to Green Mountain or to Little. Yeah, but that stuff is, it's different, that's our cost, raw cost for a student.
I know, I mentioned that before.
Right, and like I said, I just, like, I, I, I gotta call Tis and Small here about that, uh, about a month ago, and I said, oh, our tuition's not gonna be anything like that, what are you talking about? Uh, uh, hoping my board was gonna yell me out, and you had it, thank you, um, what else we got? That, that is it?
Huh?
Director's phone.
Yeah, I think, I, I've talked more than I should, so now, how about you, Krista, what do you, what do you say tonight?
I just want to really thank you and, um, Hardy for all the work that you put in to prepare for this meeting, and I found the, uh, the materials, especially Hard, we, Hardy prepared really helpful, so thank you all.
I certainly echo, thank you Hardy for the work you've done, and, and I personally think we, we did a really good stroke of business, too.
I echo what they've said, definitely helped.
Yeah.
I agree with that, and I like, um, Hardy's, um, proposals for looking forward to the other year.
Yeah.
And having a plan that really sets, um, our future.
Um, just want to say we seen some leadership in action tonight, I, and, and we've seen the thing we've flagged forever. Which is evidence of some long-term planning, something Andy and I have talked about forever. And, um, this is how you do it, and, uh, if other boys want to see how it's done, uh, watch Stack TV, uh, you'll get to see it. All right.
The only thing I'm gonna say is, uh, I want to thank Jim, because Jim's been a big help to me too, I spent some time with him, and I, I call him on the phone, he's about.
Yes, you do.
Jim is a real add to, uh, to your staff.
Yeah, well, we, we.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's nice to have planning, it's nice to have predictable stuff, it's nice to have, uh, have short committees that actually do, that do stuff. Uh, this has been a good year, um, I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Let's talk about it.
All in favor, get your coats on.
Aye.
Have a very nice.
Aye.